The October 27th meeting of the Montpelier Planning Commission to order. Do we need, I don't, we don't need to review Zoom procedures, do we?
Okay.
All right. Okay, first on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any requests for changes to the agenda? No, nobody has any changes. I'd ask for unanimous consent to approve the agenda. Hearing no, nothing otherwise, the agenda is approved. Next is to consider the minutes of October 14th. Anybody have any corrections or modifications to the minutes?
I don't have any, and I'm happy to make a motion to approve the October 14th meeting minutes.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Great. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 When opposed, any abstentions? The minutes are approved. Next is comments from the chair. I was gonna welcome our new member, but he is not here today. He had a prior commitment unfortunately, so we'll do that next meeting. I did very quickly want to just remind everybody about the ethics training that we spoke about at the tail end of last meeting. I have admittedly not done it. I will endeavor to do so with the future sooner rather than later. I hope you all do the same. And again, Mike, it's like, what, 20 minutes?
I think it's like 40 or 45 minutes to do the whole thing, but there are ways of speeding up the thing to talk.
Okay.
So you can get through it a little bit faster, but.
I was trying to sell it as a quick painless thing. Guess that's not the case.
Can I just ask, did that come to us over email? Or where should, where shall I find that?
There was a link in the agenda, so I think if you go
Oh, in this agenda.
To the, the last, the agenda to the last meeting, there's a hyperlink.
Great, I will grab that right now.
Do you know if you got mine off the top of your head? Did I do it right? Okay.
Perfect. Next is general business. There's nobody from the public in attendance. Is there anybody online? Don't see anybody. If there is somebody in the shadows, feel free to use your raise hand function. Otherwise, we'll move on to the meeting of the agenda, which is the update on planning projects in the city. Mike, give an update.
Yeah, so real quick, the only, the big thing that's been keeping us busy is the council and manager's office, planning, complaining department are continuing to advance the country club road project. We are working on getting out the RF. It's an RFP, request for proposals. The first step is an RFQ, a request for qualifications. And so we are working on this first step to start to try to identify if we can narrow and find a number of interested developers and eventually get that narrowed down to one within the next six months or so, so we can start engaging in how we move that project forward to start developing housing. We have a couple of grants that are either submitted or going to be submitted. And so the disaster recovery funds originally required us. Now they aren't requiring us, but they're saying it would be they're very competitive funds and therefore we probably would not be funded without having a developer in line. So we're continuing to move forward. We want to try to find a developer if we can, so that way we would improve our chances of getting funding. So the RF, the request RFQ went out today. Because we're still working through our alphabets, we also had an FAQ, frequently asked questions that went out today as well. That was a request at the council meeting that we start to because we seem to get the same questions over and over. There was a request that maybe we should just do an FAQ, answer those questions so that way when they come up, we could just point people to the FAQ. So we, so that is on the city's website. If people are looking for it, or they can contact the planning department or the manager's office and they want to get a copy of where it is, but it is on the city's website again, and it'll continue to get updated. So that's the update for most of the big stuff that we're working on right now.
What's the deadline for the RFU and RFP?
The RFQ, I, it's, I don't have it off the top of my head. That was the, the side the manager was working on. I want to say it sometime in December. They've got a deadline in November for questions from developers. If they've got certain questions, they'll have a tour of Country Club Road to ask questions. So there are a number of dead, the, the dates are in the RFQ.
Hey, Mike. For applications for tier one A, those open January 1st. Do, is that also the same day that the application is available? Are we going to know ahead of time what the criteria are for, for that to be able to work on it ahead of time? What's the, what do you think the timeframe is for that application?
All right, so the, there are two deadlines that are coming, or I wouldn't say deadlines, start, start times that will be coming up in January. One is CHIP, the, the community and housing infrastructure program. And so that's one developers are very interested in the, we had a meeting last week that I went to and Matt went to, so that way we could kind of get a little bit up to speed. The state has approved their rules. They're now writing out the guidelines. Those instructions should be coming out in December. So if developers are interested in that side, those would start to come out in December and applications would be avail, would be due at VEPCE in January. Unless something comes up, but as far as we know, that's the deadline, kind of some of the deadlines we've been given. People have questions on CHIP, we can help them out with that. The tier one A, we're really waiting on the CVR PC. Technically, yes, starting in January, we could apply for tier one A and tier one B status. But the reality is we need to have the future land use map approved by the LURB, the Land Use Review Board. And our map from the regional planning commission will be going there in December. There probably is going to be some back and forth, so we probably won't have an approved map until maybe February. And so we're kind of having to wait until that process is done before we can apply for one A. So, but we will keep an eye on that and let you know when, when those windows open up. Chances are good, we would probably request one B pretty quickly. Just because there's a window of time, may take a couple of months for us to go through the one A process, but one B is a pretty quick process. So one B would give our development community an out from Act 250 for a lot of small projects, I think up to 50 units. So that helps out a lot of the people who've been coming in and talking to us. A lot of our developers, our small developers have been coming in saying they would like relief. That one B would give them relief. The one A would be our eventual goal that we would be shooting for, but that makes once the application's in, there's still going to be some time, so I expect we'll do a quick one B, get that in, and then see when the one A becomes possible.
There are places in the state have already been approved for one B.
I don't think they can be approved yet, but it's, I'm not going to say absolutely no. I know they're Rutland is the, has the first set of land use review board maps getting approved. But maybe, maybe they have opened those up to be eligible. I thought they had to wait till January 1st as well, but.
It sounds like it's only, it, the one B isn't waiting on land use review board, so they, because the, the regional planning commissions are responsible for approving one B status. I know Manchester down south is already approved for one B.
All right, well, I'll take a look and see, see who's already got that.
But if we, if our regional planning commission doesn't have a, a map done yet, then obviously we're not we're not ready yet.
Yep, I can check.
Is that it, Mike?
I think that's it.
Great. Thanks. Moving on to the next agenda item, continuing our work, reviewing the zoning amendments. Potential, I should say, potential zoning amendments. So we had spoken to Mike and Meredith after the last meeting and we decided to try to I think break this up a little bit. This is a pretty significant chapter. And so I think we're trying to try to break it up into at least two sections when we re-review it. I think these are probably a little more individually, these subsections are probably a little more controversial than some of the other chapters that we've looked at. So I think I, what I was thinking and I'm happy to hear suggestions from others was to just go subsection by subsection, starting with an overview by Meredith or Mike and do the review of that subsection and then move into a discussion, you know, a Q and A or some sort of substantive discussion about that. Move on to the next subsection, do the review, have a discussion. And I'm just trying to make sure that we try to keep this as focused as possible while we do this review process. But if others have another way they want to approach it, please let me know and we can talk about it. But that's sort of how I'm envisioning it. So, okay. There's one thing that I am. So with, with that.
We'll jump into
Chapter 300.
Part three, the development standards. So this is the, a lot of the meat and potatoes of, of how things go. I mean, we talked about the district requirements and two. And three starts to get into all of those other standards that will start to apply. The chapter 300 are the general standards. So what we have are a set that apply to all projects or could be applicable to all projects. And, you know, we like to explain for anything to kind of come in, it has to at some point have in the rules, if you were to follow the rules by following the line, you've got to somewhere reach a point where it says you have to review that section. So some of these are just in section 3001, use standards are one of those. We have all these use requirements, but if you don't in your process, somewhere come down and goes and says, you have to review the use requirements, then there's a, there's kind of a gap. This, this helps to close that, that gap to go through and say, well, you know, you have to conform to the use standards for the applicable zoning district. And then there are a couple of qualifications unless the subject use is a non-conformity and the proposed development isn't conformance with the requirements of 1203. So those are the, what some people call the grandfathered rules. These are the non-conforming rules. So if you're non-conforming, then you might not need to conform with the use requirements. And then the develop, or the development has been approved as a planned unit development in accordance with chapter 440. So there are also flexibility built into the planned unit development requirements. So that kind of is, you know, we, we talked about in the last part, last thing, we had the big table of uses. Well, that's only in effect if we can actually connect someplace. And this is the line that kind of says, okay, we've touched it. Now you have to meet those requirements that exist in that section. We also go through in part, point B to explain mixed uses. So any combination of permitted or conditional uses may be allowed on a single parcel. This may seem obvious, but it actually isn't. In a lot of places in the country, you have rules which say that you can only have one primary use on a parcel. So if somebody decides to do something in their garage or have another business or build a second home, I've got, I've got my house. I've got a space. I'm going to put another house, not an accessory unit, but another house that they would say, no, you can't. That that would be two primary uses on a property. Our rules say you can have more than one primary use. So as long as there are all the uses are allowed and we've got some rules for how to calculate them. The one thing is, number one, the example that's in there is actually wrong. So we have to come up with a new rule. We changed the use table and did not catch this. Somebody else did point this out to us. It said, actually, three single resident homes on a non-subdivided parcel will therefore be a conditional use in the rural district. Not anymore. They're all permitted. So that doesn't hold, but we'll have to find another example that basically says, you know, if if you combine and put a number of things onto one parcel, then it may move you into a different, different use. Maybe if you're residential 9,000 and had 15 units, then you would have to be a conditional use. So the other pieces of uses, so we've talked about, you know, the meeting those are as a quick discussion of the prohibited uses. There, these are the ones not specifically listed unless the administrative officer finds that the unlisted use is materially similar to a list to a listed use in accordance with the section below that we'll talk about. Or is required to be permitted in a zoning district by state or federal law. So this is just answering a question that could come up, which is like, okay, what I'm proposing to do something. And it's not on the list. Does that mean I can do it or does that mean I can't do it? The, the best example I can come up with, and we'll have this, talk about this a little bit with the materially similar uses. So this helps give a little bit of guidance to Meredith. The administrative officer may determine that an unlisted use is materially similar. And should be allowed to the exact, to the same extent as the subject is the same standards listed. If the similar impacts of the neighborhood, such as traffic noise, lighting are listed as that listed use and similar characteristics such as building type, site arrangement, floor area, number of employees, customer traffic, blah, 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 blah. So the one I could think of, and maybe Meredith has some others. We had an application for the bath house up at the, well, originally it was going to be on its own parcel and now I believe it's part of the, the college, old college campus or the, the college campus. We don't have that as a listed use. So what do you do with that? And so what Meredith will do is to start to then ask and get some things. Is this medical in nature? In which case maybe we consider it the same as a doctor's office. It's, it's maybe it's an alternative medicine and we will treat it as a medicine. Maybe it's a spa and we'll treat it like a spa. But bath house itself isn't a list, so we've kind of got to go through and decide, all right. But it doesn't automatically say, well, it's not on the list, it's prohibited. You have to pick something from our list or nothing at all. It gives a little bit of flexibility to be able to go in and have a use that may not perfectly fit. And, you know, obviously as technology changes and things change, you may end up with uses that were never considered at all. And so this gives us the ability to start to go through and say, well, really that's more of an office or that's more of a this. I don't know if you have another example. The bath house was the best one I could think of.
Yeah. On there were more specific listings in the use table about different types of art studios. And we had, I had one come in that wasn't, just wasn't in there. So I had to figure out based on the kinds of impacts, like the materials, the kinds of waste being created, all those things, where to fit it. So we could get them a permit because it really I, I can't remember the exact type. I think, I honestly think it was just like, they were working with different kinds of paints and it wasn't going to be like wood crafting or anything like that. So it really wasn't, wasn't industry. It was very much an art studio, but we found something to stick it in under. And then later the actual definitions in the use table got changed to clarify so that we captured a broader group of that. Cause that's definitely not something that we don't want in Montpelier. You know, that wasn't going to be the intent. It just didn't fit squarely in the definitions that were in there. I use that clause for that one.
So I don't know if anyone have, has questions or comments on the uses and, and this gets a little bit into, you know, you know, why do we have so many rules? Well, sometimes we just need to have these types of rules that give us that flexibility and talk about these things that occasionally come up. And if not, I can jump into dimensional standards. So dimensional standards, this is just, we had in the each zoning district, we talked about setbacks and height and all these different requirements. Well, we need to have rules for how they, these are going to be measured and how they are interpreted. This just came up at a, at, at another meeting at an, at the appeal that we just had last week was, you know, a debate on, on how height is measured. So the standard development shall conform to the dimensional standards for the applicable zoning district unless the subject parcel or structure is non-conformity. And the proposed development is in conformance with the requirements of 1203. So again, if you're non-conforming, you're going to have, you don't have to conform to the rules as long as you conform to the non-conformity rules. The applicant receives a waiver, so you can request a waiver or a variance. Or the proposed development is part of a planned unit development. So planned unit developments are, I guess I should explain for everybody, will eventually get there, but you're the, the looking, looking ahead, the planned unit development are really, they're like, they're subdivisions, but they give you the ability to ask for waivers of the rules. So think of it as the, the classic ones are more suburban or almost rural. You'll have 10 acres and a two acre zoning district. And to say, oh, I can build five houses. Well, the rules would say I'd have to build in a road and have five two acre lots and I could, I could do it. But, you know, maybe the person who's doing the project goes through and says, yeah, but I, I could do a lot and just make five one acre lots and have five acres that's left open for whatever, for farming, maybe one of them, maybe it's four one acre lots and one six acre lot because there's still land available that could be used for a certain purpose, maybe a small farm, maybe some agriculture, whatever. Or maybe it's all steep slopes and swamps and you're like, hey, I got 10 acres. I'm just going to cluster it all up front. But what you need then is to break the rules. The rules say you have to have two acres. I would like to do one. And so you apply for a planned unit development. And you say, well, if I'm going to do one acre lots instead of two acre lots, the setbacks need to be smaller as well. And the spacing of the driveways needs to be smaller. So you go in and you basically say, I'm going to do a planned unit development for the whole parcel. And here are the rules that I need waived, so that way I can make the project work. So technically, as the rules state here, you have to meet all the dimensional requirements. Well, unless you get permission to not meet those requirements and the DRB would review them and grant permission. And we'll go through those later on. There are various types. There are some specific types. And then there's just some general planned unit development. If you want a lot of flexibility, there's some other planned unit development rules. So point B gets into principal buildings. Again, this is a little bit of this discussion we had in the other one where we talked about uses. You can have more than one principal building that may be located on a parcel. And the total amount of development on the parcel shall not exceed the maximum density or FAR allowed in the district. So FAR is floor area ratio. And what that floor area ratio looks at is you have density for housing units. That makes sense. I can do up to four housing units or six housing units or 10 housing units and we can count the housing units. But how do we talk about the Shaw's building or a retail space? Or an office space? How, how do we talk about what's the, what's the density of commercial space? Well, that's done by what's called a floor area ratio. And that really is comparing the amount of square footage of that use as it compares to the size of the parcel. So if you have a 10,000 square foot lot and you have a floor and you have an FAR of one, that means you could have 10,000 square feet of commercial. Now, that doesn't mean it covers the whole area because you might do, you might be an office and you might have three floors on a 3,300 square foot footprint. So footprint is different than floor area ratio. They, you just add up all of that use. So that's how you do density, you know, how much are you allowed to have of that particular type for each district. So some districts will have a FAR of two or three or four. So you might be able to in the downtown have five, six stories because you're allowed to have an FAR of five or five, four, five, six. I don't know what the we have urban one, FAR is four. So if you wanted to use your full six, you'd have to not fully cover your lot. So that's a little bit, again, this is starting to touch on all of those things in those tables where we talked about parcel size, frontage, coverage, setbacks, density, FAR. We need to go through each one of those. That's the principal building we talked about, the residential density, which is the, you know, so principal building is FAR. Residential density is your residential. And this goes through max residential density shall be based on the total parcel size. We'll see there's exceptions down below. Any non-conforming parcel may be developed with at least one dwelling unit in accordance with those regulations. So occasionally this comes up where somebody goes and says, wait, I've got a non-conforming parcel. Am I allowed to, what am I allowed to do? Well, you're always allowed to have at least one dwelling unit. So number dwelling units on the parcel shall not exceed the maximum density except, and this is where we have all of our famous rules. One is, well, accessory dwelling units don't count as a dwelling unit. So that's number one. But number three B is where we have the rule that says at a minimum, any parcel served by city sewer and water may be approved for up to six units irrespective of the district density standards provided that all other applicable standards are met. So you still have to meet your parking standards. You still have to meet building footprint, all those other requirements, but you don't have to meet the number of dwelling units, at least up to six. Further, any parcel served by water and sewer may be subdivided such that up to six dwelling units are on a conforming parcel irrespective of the district density provided all other standards are met. It's a little confusing way, but
Can I ask a question, Mike?
Yes, go ahead.
So okay, so we've got non-conforming. Can you bring that back up? I'm sorry, Eric, can you not do both at the same time?
I, I can't. I just, I was trying to make sure people could see it.
Hi guys. So I see this like non-conforming, any not in this 3002C2. Non-conforming parcel can be developed irrespective of whether the lot, it has the amount of building land, right? So it's basically that floor, you know, whatever that coverage, the lot coverage, it doesn't count for non-conforming. Where, where does it talk about, what about with a conforming lot?
So the conforming lot would be caught in, in a couple areas, one being point B. If you're on sewer and water, then you have to you have up to six. Otherwise, you're really up on top with the residential density shall be regulated in accordance with the the district.
So that, that six units and all that, it's, it trumps whatever coverage ratios that we, we have. Is that right?
No.
No, you still have to meet the coverage. It just exempts the density part. So if you have a, a coverage requirement of 40%, you would still have to, you'd still have to stay below the 40% coverage requirement.
Okay. So I, maybe I'm just, maybe I'm just reading too, is like, we're giving non-conform, anyway, we can flag this for later. I know that we're just trying to get through, but it looks like non-conforming parcels have more rights than a conforming parcel to me, anyway.
So it just means that if there's a parcel that was previously created under law.
that we can't tell someone who inherits it or otherwise buys it, that they then can't use it at all. Right? And the amount of buildable land. That's actually an old phrase that probably we should somehow strike because we don't use buildable land, I don't think in here anymore. It doesn't have to do with the coverage. There used to be a buildable land measurement when these were adopted in 2014.
That's why my confusion, maybe. Yeah. Maybe just flag it so we're concerned. Anyway, that was my plain language reading, so.
Yeah, I hear you. But it's again, it's yeah, the the buildable land thing had to do with mostly steep slopes and wet ones.
Thanks.
Yeah. And, and yeah, so really where this is going to come up, because if you have, even if you have a nonconforming lot, you still get up to six if you're on sewer and water. So this really applies, if you're in the rural district and we have a number of these out near up on Elm Street, there are a number of smaller parcels that are on on Elm Street, out near the, out near the dam, there are a number of them that are less than two acres. Well, if somebody found a parcel that was a half an acre in size, according to the zoning, you'd have to have two acres because it's in the rural district in order to build a house. And so they'd be like, all right, well, what is, what do I, what can I do with the land? You're always allowed to have at least one. In that case, you could build one, one house, you'd still have to meet the rules, but that would be your, your one unit that you could build.
You are saying, but on with the caveat that they're still going to have to somehow provide sewer and water, even if
Yeah, it'd have to meet all other requirements.
I'm just flagging that in there.
Yeah, we just can't. Yeah, we just can't go through and say, yeah, because you're, because you don't have two acres, you can't build anything. That's not a thing. You, you, you still have the right to build at least one unit. So this is where, like I said, three B is where we've got that those standards that we talk about. So some of these like a parcel served may be subdivided such that up to six dwelling units are on a conforming parcel irrespective of the density. Some of these came up because we had some when it was before, when it was two units or four units. You would have somebody who's got a big enough lot that could be subdivided. And let's say they put their six units on one of the parcels and they still had a vacant parcel. And what, what this says is yet you're still allowed to subdivide it and have a vacant parcel that would be eligible for six. And that's really what that's trying to get at. And we've had some of these come up already for for these as to the timing of how things work. And it's like, no, as long as, as long as you can still legally subdivide, you can the fact that you're making it smaller doesn't doesn't eliminate your right to make a subdivision. And then, and people, I think a lot of people forget this or don't even recognize this, any parcel within the design review overlay district that we talked about at the last meeting or the capital complex shall not have a maximum residential density requirement, provided all other applicable standards are met. So if you're in design review, you do have extra burdens to meet, but you get the advantage of the fact that there is no density requirement that applies. Maximum density. Residential. Calculating density, each they do it. Nonresidential density is FAR, residential density are the dwelling units. That's what this kind of goes into. And then we've got a section on, on three that starts talking, okay, what happens when we've got, you know, the French block and we've got commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor or some Berry Street properties where you've got that, that mix? How do we calculate it? And this kind of helps go through it. We may have to go and review the example to make sure the example is still correct. With the changes of some of the rules, but generally what it is, is you're gonna, you're gonna basically make a factor of each one to go through and say, you do just do the math to figure it out. And then off street parking located within a building footprint shall not be included in the calculation of floor area ratio. So this comes out occasionally with some commercial properties. If I put the parking underneath it, does that count against my amount of developable land? And the answer is no. We actually could probably move that up to point B. But I guess can be either place. And then what each one of these has that we've gone through. And I think Meredith has been kind of scrolling through is we've had a number of these that are when these regulations were first developed, unfortunately, they haven't changed so much that they, that these are wrong yet. But some point this will be tricky because these were all produced in in the past. We actually have illustrated dimensional standards for a number of the standards to try to help people understand them. From the lot coverage to how do we measure setbacks? Building dimensions, how do we measure height? And we'll get to some of these coming up, but they put all of the figures in one spot. So that's kind of what these are going through. And then some of these are pretty straightforward. I don't think there's anything too fancy about parse measuring parcel size, measuring frontage. I believe frontage, if you've got frontage on two roads, then they just
Two fronts and the rest are sides.
Yep. Yeah, I was just trying to see if you add, add the two or if you've got to meet the frontage requirement on each one.
Oh, for the lot frontage, you just have to meet it on one.
You just have to meet it on one. But you don't get to add them. So if you had needed to have 100 feet of frontage and you had 50 feet on one road and 50 feet on the other, is that 100 feet of frontage?
Oh, that hasn't come up to be perfectly honest.
There we go. There we go. We need another rule now.
I think because it's about having enough space for your driveway, you, you, especially if it's not on a corner like this, because we have somewhere they have frontage on the north side and frontage on the south side. One of those has to meet the frontage requirement. I think if we had a corner like this, again, probably because you don't want your driveway coming out of the corner, you'd probably want at least one of those to meet the frontage requirement if we were talking about a subdivision, which is the only time it comes into play is when you're creating a new parcel.
All right. So we'll maybe need to put that clarification. One needs to meet just so that way we know we're clear. There's also what to do for a parcel that doesn't have any frontage. We occasionally, there are a few of them out there. We're not allowed to create those anymore, but there are some that are out there and how do you handle some of those setbacks are generally fairly straightforward. We do need to kind of go through. So this talks about parcels with the frontage on more than one street shall have a front front setback requirements on each of the streets. So is that a front setback? If I, if I'm on a corner lot, do I have a front and a side? What's my setback? It's like, no, that's a front and that's a front. And then you don't have any rear, if you've got a square lot. You just have two, two sides.
The development review board actually determined you don't have any rears at all, even if there's other funky parcel lines. They've just determined that they're all sides.
So some accessory structures have different rules as opposed to primary structures. Driveways may encroach into a required setback. So in other words, you may have a setback that says 10 feet, but that doesn't mean your driveway can't be in that 10 feet. So certain things can happen within that. There's some flexibility for the administrative officer. We fixed most of these, but in the event it comes up where somebody has a lot where the setbacks don't match, the, the zoning administrator has the right to go and say, you can match. So if you've got two nonconforming, if the people to the left of you are not conforming, the people to the right of you are not conforming, you actually can then move yourself up into that to match those building lines. And setbacks for buildings and similar structures shall be measured on a level line to the closest point of the building and subject property line or water body. And this is one that I'm going to flag and, and say one thing we should probably amend is that this should be measured to the foundation. Typically, that's what most people are going to do. They're going to go, they're going to build it out, then they build the house. And then they put their roof on and it's got a one foot eve or two foot eve. And all of a sudden you're like, oh, now I'm in violation or I put a, you know, a light on the front of the house and all of a sudden that light is violating. Well, if we measure to the setback and then say, you're allowed to have a two foot or three foot candle lever for the eaves. As long as it's not more than three feet, you're okay. We measure to the foundation. And that helps to fix a lot of those types of easy mistakes for a developer to make, easy mistake for a zoning administrator to to miss while approving or measuring. And it's just, when I worked in Berry City, that was the rule we had. It's measured to the, to the foundation. And then other things might be able to intrude along the way, whether that's gutters or eaves or things. So we may come back with a set of recommendations and let you guys consider that. So parcels without frontage, again, we're still talking about these setbacks. What happens if you're on one of those parcels that has an easement? Then you have no fronts or rears. All you have are side setbacks. Where an accessory structure such as a deck or garage is attached to a principal structure, the accessory structure may encroach into the principal setback. But the uses in the portion of the structure encroaching shall be limited to accessory uses. So this is a bit of a mouthful. What that is saying is you've got a house with an attached garage. Is the fact that the garage is attached to the house, does that mean it needs to meet the principal setback? So principal setback might say 20 feet. Accessory structures can be 10. You might be able to go, okay, well, now I'm going to be, I'm going to be 10 feet. You know, my house is 30 feet away. I can have a 20 foot, 24 foot garage and it's going to get in there and I'm going to, I'm going to still meet my setbacks for that. But where the limitation starts coming in is because you don't meet the principal setback, you can't go in later on to convert that into another housing unit. Because that would be a principal use, could be an accessory dwelling unit, but it can't be another primary dwelling unit. You can't convert that garage into a business or something that is a principal use. If you don't meet the principal use setback, you're, you get limited by that. So it's a little bit, but it was just something we needed to know. We treat it as a nonconforming. We just need to know, because we've got these questions every once in a while and you're like, well, yeah, if it's a, you know, because sometimes we're like, well, if it's attached to the principal dwelling, does it make it part of the principal dwelling and it can't? Then use the, use that extra setback area. And we eventually came up with, no, you can use it. But everything then must follow the accessory use, at least within that space. Heights, again, most of this is pretty straightforward. You know, we don't count belfries, steep, steeples, cupolos, domes, similar architectural features that aren't used for a human habitation. Skylights, parapet walls, cornices, chimneys, ventilators, mechanical equipment usually located on roof, provided the feature are not limited to the height necessary for the proper functioning. So again, we aren't going to measure to the top of the chimney. We're going to measure to the top of the roof. We're not going to, if it has some type of cupolo on the top, we don't include that as long as it's not used for any habitation. Building height is the average of the highest and lowest points. So that's how height is calculated. We're in Montpelier. Nothing's flat. So we've got to find out where the height is measured from the front or the back or the left or the right, whatever the highest and lowest are, we measure those up and it's the average of those two. Measuring the dimensional standards. Dimensional standards for parcel setbacks and buildings shall be measured as shown in 301, 302 and 303. Building footprint is a max cap for individual buildings and it's not a cap of the cumulative total. So building footprint is one of the requirements, but it's not cumulative. So what we're trying to do with the building footprint is to make sure that somebody doesn't come in and plunk down one really big building. Now there are waiver requirements. So if you want to be bigger than say the 5,000 square foot requirement. But if you go through and put two 4,000 square foot buildings, that's not a violation of the footprint because they're two separate buildings. And then we've got waiver rules. So that's a lot in there and the waiver gives you the, a table which tells you how much you're allowed to waive up to 5% of the coverage requirement. Side setbacks can be waived to 10 feet, less than the district standard, but not less than five feet. No max limit for waiver request for footprint. You could ask for a waiver of up to five more feet to your building height. And the dimensional standards, other dimensional standards of DRB may modify any dimensional standards in these regulations, but not by more than 10%. So give some flexibility for some other rules that may not be in there. So a lot of these are kind of how Meredith does her job, but there's a lot of flexibility built in there. So that is dimensional standards. Maria.
I guess I, I grew up in a row home. So like, this is all very odd to me. What is the point of the the front, like the parcel of frontage rules? Like, why do planners have that?
For the frontage, so the
Why does the lot have to be like 20 feet? Why does the frontage have to be like 30 feet wide? Why is that a why is that a rule?
Frontage is most, it applies really when you're subdividing a lot. And you've been really what it's trying to do is to make sure there's enough space for a structure to be placed there with, within those, within, with the setback limits. So it would be to create orderly development.
Can I just flag another, what I think of as the key thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're a city where there's lots of driveways, lots of cars, just is what it is, right? And so you need enough frontage to be able to fit in your driveway in a safe way amongst these others. Like we can't create new parcels that don't have frontage on a city or private street. Because it makes it harder to get access to city water and sewer. It also makes it harder for you to be able to get construction equipment in because you have to have an easement over someone else's land to be able to get to your own land, to be able to do stuff on it. And they ran into a whole bunch of issues with parcels being created without that frontage. Where maybe your water and sewer lines run through someone else's parcel before they get to your house. Some cases, it actually ran through the house because originally they were two family homes on one parcel and then they subdivided the back and sold it off. And so the person in front got sick of what the person in back was doing and shut off the water and sewer to the house behind it. So having that direct access to the frontage, whether it's a private road where you have deeded rights to be able to cross it or it's a street, you know, public street. It, it just makes everything easier to be able to do stuff with that parcel without having to get permissions from someone, some other private entity to be able to do things and get access to your own property. Okay, that's the, the front
The actual number of feet in the frontage requirement, though, you can still do row homes. If you were to go through and say, we're going to have a zoning district that allowed row homes. And, you know, our typical row homes are going to be 30 feet wide or 24 feet wide. You just have a frontage requirement that says they have to be at least 24 feet wide. And then you walk them out. I mean, Urban Center one has a minimum frontage requirement of 30 feet. So if you want to create a new parcel in Urban Center one, has to at least be 30 feet wide. So our frontages are fairly small numbers.
I imagine so, going on what Meredith said. The frontage, I'm imagining like a weird lot, you know, like where you have kind of like a sneaky driveway that could expand into a larger land space.
If you, if you go into the full details on the frontage and the If you, if you go into the full details on the frontage and the exceptions for it, there's options for that.
Yeah.
We try not to create too many of those if possible at this point.
Weird lots.
Yeah. Because it does still, I mean, if your right of way is very narrow, it is gonna make it harder to develop that rear back parcel. But there's, there are parcels like that created around the city. And, I mean, if, there's, there's ways to go about it and ways to work with it.
Wasn't this, I feel like this was one of the things that James Moore got stuck on. It was like the frontage rules. Along with the driveway.
Um, that's.
For multiple units.
That's one that he's wrestling with, with one parcel.
Yeah, the drive, driveway issue is when we get there is a section that needs. Yeah, driveway spacing absolutely needs to get fixed.
Yeah, that one 100% needs to be.
And it is related to the frontage, but. Yeah, cause they have to work together. They're gonna work.
I'm gonna piggyback on this a little bit, thinking about row homes and thinking about. Let's say Town Hill where some of, some of these development questions are, are coming into play right now. My assumption as well is, is that the numbers that go into these dimensions, whether it's 25 foot setback or 100 foot. Frontage. There's also sort of neighborhood aesthetic components to that as well, in my opinion. So you don't have houses that are directly next to each other. You don't have houses that are three or four stories tall. Up there as well, let's say Town Hill, this particularly residential neighborhood. And driveways aren't that close to each other and you don't have houses that are directly on the street. So in my opinion, it's not just technical, but there is like an aesthetic component to it as well. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Nope, that's, that's accurate. And, and, you know, I think this has been, this just came up a lot in when we talked about the district dimensions of a lot of the rules. Reflect what's on the ground today. And, you know, maybe the rules need to be adjusted. To have a more future centric look at things, you know. A lot of these are, well, you know, our frontage requirement is 100 feet in this district. But that's because that's really what you find in that neighborhood is every, this is 100, 110, 120, 110, 120. You know, they're kind of in that range. So we said, well, it's 100 foot. But how bad is it if somebody came in with a 60 foot? If somebody had 120 feet and subdivided into two 60 foot lots. I mean, it's changing the character of the neighborhood, but again, this was the question we were talking about a lot. Last week or two weeks or two meetings ago, when, when we were talking about, you know. Well, what about character of the neighborhood? We have to start thinking about whether that character should be changing and what. Changing is okay, which, you know, to what degree, to what extent, maybe, maybe smaller lots would be okay. In some of these neighborhoods, maybe it doesn't really work in some others.
Yeah, I think it's, this is a big question, especially when it comes for into infill and subdividing in these, in these neighborhoods and. What do these numbers that, that are now applying to the entire neighborhood look like now and in the future? I do think this is one of those areas where if and when we make changes, we will get a decent amount of pushback from particular. Places because people, people, people really like their separation. Which is frontage rules, you know, driveway rules, setback rules. So not to say that, that should discourage us from making some changes, but that is a place where people will latch on.
So some of the big ones come in our, and this maybe gets to your, your question on the frontage as well, which is when people start stacking lots to go through and say, well. Really what I'm doing is I'm not changing the frontage on the street. I'm gonna take my driveway and extend it and then I'm gonna have another lot. And then I'm gonna have another lot. Right now, you can, you could build three houses on the lot. You could put, if you, let's say you had a duplex on front. Then you said, well, I'm gonna just extend my driveway and have another duplex and another duplex behind that. And as long as each building meets the setback requirements, that's okay. Everybody else in your neighborhood has a backyard and they might be like, well, these people can look into my backyard now because they're. Not on the street. But what these rules say you can't do is subdivide those and sell those as separate building lots. Because you'd have to make that driveway into a road.
Sure.
For you to be able to do that, because you need to have the frontage requirements. Now, we could talk about, is that a good thing or a bad thing? You can already build the units. And you can probably go through and condominiumize it and sell them in that way, but ultimately they would remain one parcel. And we could adjust the rules that says, actually, you don't need to have frontage, as long as you. Don't have more than a certain number of units. You could have a driveway with frontage on a driveway. Right now, you need to have frontage on a private or public road. We could change it to driveway and that's something we, we will have to talk about and consider.
Two quick questions. So right off the bat and under. Three double O two A. There's a reference to receiving a waiver variance from the DRB. And this is more just sort of a nuts and bolts question. I've got two of them. Number one is, is looking at section. I don't wanna jump too far ahead, but 4602 with respect to waivers and 4603 with respect to variances. Indicates that an application for the waiver or the variance goes to the administrative officer? Is that?
All applications come to me and then I forward them on.
Right, okay. So the first question is, is, does, when you forward it to the DRB, is there a recommendation from you? That goes to the DRB with respect to whether to grant the variance of the.
Application that goes to the development review board through me gets, yeah, what I would call is a recommendation. I do a full analysis and staff report under every applicable regulation and give it to them. It's basically. A draft of the decision with suggestions.
In, in some cases, there may not be a specific, if there's a, if there's an open question, it might not be, I recommend or don't recommend. It might be.
Here's the question.
Here's one of the questions. There's a question on character of the area that you will need to determine. For this application.
Yeah.
Meredith can't really make a recommendation of, I think, I think it meets the character. I don't think it meets the character. In some cases, it's just you, DRB. If you need to look at this. Other cases, it's like. You know, it appears clear that it meets this requirement. It appears clear if he says, or it's, this is not applicable. This is not applicable. This is not applicable.
Thanks. I guess I think of the staff report as the recommendation, but you're right.
Yes. Yeah, and so I'm.
Even the nitty gritty.
And I appreciate that. And I guess I'm looking more specifically at sort of. As, as related to the dimensional standards, we've got this chart. Figure 306, the waiver limitations that really spells out, you know, what those limits are. I, I guess my question is, is. Do you guys feel like there's room to have some of these waiver determinations with respects to the dimensional standards? To stay with the administrative officer as opposed to keep forwarding, okay.
No.
Why? And that's fun, and that's fun. I'm just trying to understand.
Cause it's a waiver from the regular rules, right? If, if you're gonna give that. Authority to the administrative officer, it's not a waiver anymore. It is a, here's, here's an expansion of what's allowed. Waivers have to, I, I wanna say waivers under statute have to go to the DRB. I know variances have to. But it's just, it's not.
Yeah, I'm just speaking to, I'm just speaking to these very limited list of maximum.
But it still is a judgment call of, cause when you go there, you then have to look at. The section 4602 waiver criteria, which are not very specific. Right, this is the, that 5% waiver allowance is the max waiver that the DRB is allowed to grant as a waiver. And the things being.
Provided it doesn't affect the character of the neighborhood.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Or, or those types of rules which are flexible for the DRB, but aren't really working as well for Meredith.
Sure, I guess my question is there, so the waiver criteria that you're speaking to. Are those part of your analysis that goes?
I mean, I, what I will point out to the board is I will help summarize for them what has been submitted as. Facts that go to those criteria. It is the board's determination whether or not that appropriately meets the standard. If it's something where I'm like. They, like. Maybe, like, or, or if I'm like, mm, I just don't see it at all, right? So there's, there's, the waiver criteria are. Much simpler than say the variance, but one is the proposed development is beneficial or necessary for the continued reasonable use of the property. That's. Pretty amorphous, right? And the other one for waiver is, you know, the, the very, it says variance, but it also means waiver. If authorized, shall not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or district. Shall not substantially or permanently impair the lawful use or development of adjacent property. I mean, that one, the substantially or permanently impair the lawful use or development of adjacent property. If somebody wants, you know, their building. To be. You know, have 5,000 extra square feet in the footprint and it's the school, which we actually had somebody add, it was a 5,000 square feet. I don't remember what it was. But they needed a footprint waiver. It's the school. They're not, they're adding on in addition. So that they can have an ADA accessible entrance next to the playground. Is not gonna impair anybody else's use of property. So something like that, I'm gonna say, I'm pretty sure it meets that part of it. Whether or not the, the other things come into play, that's really, it's up to the board, right? It, it's all comes down to very fact specific things. Waivers are easier to get than the next one.
Yeah, I was, I was more speaking to the waiver issue. I agree the variance. Or more.
Yeah, but no, there's, there's items in there. That really are not black and white.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, right, that's, I, it's helpful. I appreciate that. I'm just trying to figure out if, say, somebody comes in for a waiver. To deviate from the maximum height, you know, the height maximum of like three feet, you know, it's like.
That's why then you can just, you know, we had discussed ages ago about. Raise the height limits in some zoning districts. That's a possible change. And then you can also. You know, that alone helps deal with those.
Right.
Those three foot instances that we might see right now.
I'm just trying to find efficiencies in the process as they relate to these, like, I think these dimensional standard waivers are. So kind of low hanging fruit that we can figure out a way to deal with.
I haven't seen almost any requests for those. In my seven years here, we've had maybe one height waiver. I think I summarized this at one point. Setback waivers have been the biggest ones and a couple of footprint waivers for already really big, like institutional buildings. Or something where it was just going over. There haven't been a ton of waiver requests. But they also haven't been a lot of projects really trying to push the envelope, right? And, you know, you're, you're trying to encourage people to push what has then the envelope, it sounds like, and, and just make that envelope bigger.
Yeah. Thanks. Yeah, and just fundamentally, when it comes to waivers, what we've tried to do, how we try to explain it is, we really wanna make. An easy process. And again, we can change the rules, which Meredith mentioned. We wanna make it as easy as possible for people to do what we want. And so if you're gonna do something that. Meets our rules, then it's administrative. And so we tried to get as much administrative as possible. And then to build in flexibility, we have the waivers. So if, if you want special, then you gotta go talk to them. It may take you a little bit longer, but if you want, we can get these permits out really quickly administratively. As long as you keep following all of the administrative rules. But if you need a little bit more flexibility, we've got some rules to give you a little bit more flexibility, but that's gonna have a little bit more process. And again, we can always adjust to make more administrative, but that's really the intent of the waivers is just. Make it easy for people to do what we want. And then if you want to do something beyond that, then go to the board. And I'm sure we'll be back to visit these if anyone wants us to go back and visit them. But actually making pretty good time going, getting through these accessory structures. So again, we've talked about a lot of principal stuff. Now we talk about accessory structures and uses. These are those, you know. Garages. Maybe it's a fire escape, flagpoles. Mailboxes, pools, retaining walls, sheds, sidewalks. Just all these types of things that might come into play. And, you know, what needs to meet setbacks. And in some cases, some things don't need to meet setbacks at all. And we just try to get into that. Within this section to talk about dimensional density standards and the requirements. I don't know if there's anything that's really come up in here that's been an issue. So you can't convert an accessory use or structure to a principal use without meeting the requirements. So I don't know if anyone has questions on accessory uses. In 3004, we've got talking about demolitions. So this really, this is not only talking about the demolition of an entire structure. But also can, can apply in the case of historic buildings to sections. So. The demolition of a porch off of a historic building may constitute demolition. And so we rewrote these rules, I think, working with the Historic Preservation Commission. To come up with a, a more detailed set of rules because these were, these were very tricky under our old rules. And so we really tried to come up with a better, more black and white stand, set of standards. Than had previously applied. And most of the rules. If it's not historic and you're not either destroying all or some of a historic building, if you're outside of historic buildings. Then you're pretty much, what is it? You gotta cover. What are you doing with the materials and how are you regrading the site? So as, so if you've just got an average house, not historic, not in the historic district. Or even if it's in the historic district, the dump, from the demolition standpoint, all we care about is, we're gonna return it to grade. And remove all the debris. And if you do that, you meet the demolition requirements. If you start getting into demolishing historic buildings, then there's a lot more requirements and standards and details to that. Talking about historic integrity, economic viability, and these existed in the old zoning. They just weren't very well described and detailed. And so this tried to help. Fill in some of those gaps of all the questions that we would have to deal with. So there is some other options, public benefit standards, conditions of approval. I don't know if you want me to go through all of these, but really that's, those are the big details. They want to protect the historic integrity as much as possible. That doesn't mean you can't demolish it. This kind of goes very similar to what we talked about at the last meeting of the historic standards. We have a goal, but that doesn't mean it's gonna stop a whole lot of projects. Ah, Gabe, you got a question?
Probably could find it, but just cause I got the experts right there. When we talk historic, we're talking, it's, it's on the federal register as a. Sign, whatever that term is, right? Like a significant contributing building or something?
On the federal or state register. Yep, a contributing structure on the federal or state register. So that does not necessarily mean it's in the historic district. There are buildings in the city that are on those registers that are not in the historic district.
Right, but it's not just because it's old. That's, that was my point. Thank you.
Right, right. It's not just because it's old. And we've actually, we've made sure to define exactly what's meant in the regulations. And really had to specify that and in a way that. Our office can take a look at a structure and just say, yes or no, this section applies versus. I know in some, some locales, they have a, you know, it's eligible to be listed. And that would have entailed putting a whole bunch more process on somebody who isn't clearly already have a structure that's registered. So. No.
Yeah, thank you.
A whole lot of, a whole lot of ranches and raised ranches were built up on Berlin Street in the early 1970s, which would all qualify as eligible. And, and so, yeah, no, we, and we have a map. So even if it could be 200 years old, if it's not on that map. Then it's not historic. So we've got a map that tells us which are the buildings that are on those lists. So the, the next section, and this goes, gets us to riparian areas. So now we've got a set of these that kind of come in for natural resources and we have a natural resources map that we have here. Sorry, Sean and Gabe, you guys don't, but Meredith may be able to pull it up. So riparian areas are the areas that are defined by the water setback. Established in the base district. So if you. So if you remember back to those little tables, each one would have a setback and it would have front, side, rear and water. So we have mapped in our GIS and we have the map here. As you change zoning districts, it might get wider. So you might have, it might be relatively narrow in an urban area. And as you get to the rural district, it suddenly gets bigger. And that's because in the rural district, the, the stream setbacks might be 25 feet. So we have some rules on, on applicability. So really what it is, is we're talking about the water setbacks as established in the base district. One question that came up that we didn't know until it came up was what do we do with pre-existing buried streams? So there are a number of buried streams in town. And we had to figure out how to handle those. We've got a rule for that. Measuring setbacks, how do you measure them? Do you measure them from the water? They're measured actually from the top of the bank, which isn't always obvious, but.
We have a definition for it.
We have definitions for them. So. We had to put one in because, you know, what do you do if they just never really has a top of the bank? The exception for pre-existing buried streams, they have a, a 10-foot setback maintained from the center line of the culvert. And no buffer is required for a buried stream. So really water setbacks are looking at trying to avoid having new development in those areas and to require a certain amount of that to be vegetated. So, and the general rule is it's half. So if you have a 50-foot water setback, then 25 feet of it is supposed to be naturally, uh, have a natural vegetation. But there are a lot of rules and exceptions and waivers and pieces that can go into that. But what we're trying to be able to do is to, especially in our, areas that are outside of the urban core, is to start making sure we have vegetation on the banks. It, it improves water quality. It treats, uh, the runoff, any stormwater runoff gets treated, um, by the root systems while they're there. It stabilizes the banks. So the banks, the, those streams are less likely to move during flooding events. So that's what we're trying to accomplish with these rules. There are, this is one of the few areas where the Conservation Commission plays a part. We staff had discouraged the rules going in this direction to have another board in just because it adds more time and adds more process. And they're not familiar. The Conservation Commission isn't used to being quasi judicial board. And so it may be something that we can come up and talk about a little bit because we've, you know, uh, it hasn't always worked smoothly. Going to the Conservation Commission, it could be, we could always amend it to give the Conservation Commission almost interest, like interested party status. They can come in and, and give testimony. We would send them an application and say, hey, we've got an application that's going to impact it. If you guys would like to participate, you can go to the DRB and participate. But it would be less of a process of having them, of having our applicants go to the Conservation Commission to have determinations made. But this is one of the few areas where there's a separate board that starts to get involved. Conservation gets involved here and I believe maybe in the, the vernal pools and wetlands, maybe.
Uh, subdivisions, subdivisions involving any of the, um, tracked items on this map. Have to go to the Conservation Commission for written comments. Those written comments have to go to the DRB. So that one has actually come up much more often than the, um, vegetated buffer, riparian buffer waivers. We haven't had almost any riparian buffer waivers. It's, it's been much more in the subsequent process.
So then there's non-conforming rules, waiver rules. So we try to have a, a, try to, each one of these tries to follow. And as we get into other sections, we'll talk about this again. We try to follow a consistent set of things. We talk about, you know, A is purpose, B is applicability. You know, these, how to measure things, what are the exceptions, what are the rules? And then we get into how to handle a non-conforming and how to handle waivers. So we try to talk about these in each one of these, uh, kind of in a consistent format. And your applicability is, quote, what needs to meet these requirements? So. Is the plug right there on the side?
Uh, I think somebody disconnected it underneath somewhere.
Plugged in there, but not plugged in on the floor?
Or I don't know. No, actually the power cord. That's where the, there's. Yep. So we've got to find it at the other end. That one.
I don't know what to do. Just watching this chaos.
I think there's already two men on the table.
No, I don't think so. It just says, says batteries running low still. Is that, did that get unplugged? Underneath.
No, I, I checked that.
Let's try a different.
You moved it there.
It's this, this, it isn't being run through this one. So if we lose this one, we're just losing the screen, right?
Uh, that's, that's how all the sound and everything goes through. So, oh.
Yeah. I switched it to the uh, silver outlet down there.
Okay. And there's a battery backup. So maybe the battery backup died.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm on the high seats.
I don't know if you saw there was a low battery that resolved under the table. No one saw anything, but there was chaos under the table.
All right. So back to riparians. Um, that's, that's a lot of what it is. Why, why is there what we're trying to accomplish? So I don't know. Uh, I'll open that up to, to questions. Any, any overall questions? I mean, uh, did you, did we want to try to do oh six as well?
Yeah, I thought that was.
Get the last one.
Yeah, let's get that.
They tie together.
All right. Uh, so the oh six is wetlands and vernal pools. So again, very similar. Talks about purpose, applicability, hearing requirements, the development standards. So we regulate to the, so, um.
I'll put the map back up.
So people know, we regulate to the map. And what that means is, if you talk to act 250, you can't impact a wetland. And it's a wetland that's on our map and any wetland that's not on our map. And so, that becomes difficult for Nick and Meredith because February comes along, we're under two feet of snow and somebody comes in and says they want to build a house. How do we know if there's a wetland that's not on the map? That they have to meet the wetland requirement. Well, that's why the state says, well, every project then needs to go out and get a wetlands determination. What we've said is we're going to adopt the wetlands map. And that is going to be the, the wetlands. If it's on the map, same, same thing we do for floodplains. If the map says you're in the floodplain, you're in the floodplain. And if it says you're not in the floodplain, you're not in the floodplain. The real world may be a little bit different. Some areas that are mapped out are really in and some things that are in are really out, but we kind of are, we regulate to the map because we just can't have everybody going through and having to do wetlands and determinations on everything. So this is, uh, these are the wetlands that are in our wetlands map. Now the state has recently updated the state wetlands inventory. And so I'm going to probably say, we're going to be looking at going through and amending this layer on this map. And we'll talk about, we'll, we'll do some comparative maps. But I think we should probably use the most up to date state maps. Because they have made, uh, a, a significant update to the wetlands maps across the state. So, I think it would make sense for us to update our map to the most accurate state map. And then we'll continue to regulate to the map. And I think beyond that, we regulate vernal pools. Now vernal pools, you'll see here the, uh, the yellow ones. And those are generally amphibians need, uh, uh, spaces in the spring for breeding, um, and they may dry up for the summer. But the vernal pools have been identified by the Conservation Commission through a number of projects in the early 2000s. So they went through and, um, studied them, looked for them, found them and then mapped them. And so we identify them. Now what's in a vernal pool circle does not say you can't develop those areas. A lot of people think of it as like the wetland maps. Wetlands are really strict. If it's, if it's a wetland, then you can't build in, in the wetland areas. Except as identified in here, there are occasional things you can do, limited road and utility crossings, those types of things. But the vernal pools, you can, you can do more in those areas. It really depends on its impact on the vernal pool. We're going to look at a larger area and make sure that it's not impacting the vernal pool. Pretty accurate. So that's, that's really the difference. Uh, most communities don't regulate the vernal pools. But we had an active conservation commission that did a lot of work. They also identified these critical habitats. So we actually have critical habitats that are also identified. They're not in this section. Um, they're regulated, I think in subdivisions.
Yeah, just subdivision.
Just subdivisions. But for the wetlands, wetlands apply. So again, big picture, we're talking about development standards. We're talking about general standards. These apply to everything. So no matter what application comes in, we are going to look at are there wetlands on the property? The riparian buffer, the uses, accessory uses, dimensional standards, they apply no matter what the project is, no matter where the project is, these standards all apply. And we'll have a couple more that we'll talk about next time. And that was the first half. We said we'd get through six and we actually did.
If we stick with, um, the, the natural resources theme and then thinking about, um, bringing in the new, new wetlands inventory from the state. Does that, does that include, is it just wetlands? Does it include vernal pools? Does it include rivers, lakes, ponds? Is that in there as well? I mean, most of those are mapped, but I know that you can, you can really increase a lot of, um, fidelity and resolution when, with new layers and something to be considered of.
I don't believe they have vernal pools in the new layers. They do have wetlands. We don't have, uh, lakes and ponds have, uh, their own special designation called shorelines. So we don't have lakes and ponds in town. So we don't have any shoreline. We don't have any need for shoreline regulations because we don't have it. But we have the riparian buffers for streams and rivers.
Yeah, I'm thinking more for the streaming rivers because they, we do have a lot in, in, in town. And depending on the definition of what a stream is, um, and what gets mapped. And I know there's very high resolution, uh, data sets out there for, for streams, for instance. What we have on this map currently, our current map feels quite accurate and, um, the main, it looks like the major streams that we know of in town. Anyway.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly update all the data layers. If we're updating the natural resources, we can certainly go through, as you said. We were looking at this map really zoomed out. So. You know, um, if there is a more accurate stream layer, then, cause we did the riparian, so the riparian buffers on any of the streams that are on the map.
Right.
So if we have a more accurate stream map that identifies streams that, you know, maybe there are two or three streams that aren't on the existing natural resources inventory. If we create a new, use better data that identifies new streams, then that may add buffers to an area that currently doesn't have that requirement.
Yeah, just looking at the, I'll just say, just looking at the wetlands, if there's the wetlands inventory map from the agency of natural resources is, is, there's a lot, there's a lot in, in Montpelier. It probably goes beyond quite a bit what we currently have mapped.
Yeah, that's kind of my question too. Like the national wetlands inventory, national hydrography data set, you know, the, the data mapped here, does it include the NWI and NHD or is it just the Montpelier natural resources inventory stuff? So yeah, I'd be curious to know if this data is showing NWI and NHD or just what the Montpelier natural resources inventory folks mapped.
I think it was just, this one was just, we grabbed from the state, what the state wetland was at that time.
Yeah. The bottom right has, has sources on it. It looks like 2010 sources for like Vermont, uh, the A and R. Potentially, uh, vernal pools are from the Conservation Commission. My guess is it's not high, highly, uh, high resolution data, but if we're going in that direction, it's, it's just something to think about.
Yeah, probably doesn't, you know, the, the NWI, this, the national wetlands inventory isn't very accurate. So usually automatically as soon as you've got a state inventory, it's going to be, just have lines that are more accurate than, than the, the national wetland. But now that the state's gone through and done some real high resolution imaging, um, they've got a much better, much better data set. It is seems at least looking at my property to be more accurate because I, I don't think I've got wetlands on my property on the current zoning map. And I'm, I can tell you it gets very soggy on my property. So then the new map shows, yeah, you're a wetland.
Yeah, it would just be interesting because with private properties, you know, unless you're paying somebody to do some type of delineation, we wouldn't know if there was a wetland necessarily, you know? So yeah, the kind of national data sets aren't nearly as accurate as going in. But when we're dealing with private properties, like sometimes all you have is just national data sets. Cause why pay for aquatic resource delineation if you don't need to, you know?
I, I assume the floodplains from Austin's can probably be, uh, it's my assumption.
Yes.
That makes that make sense to go where you can.
Yeah, we go with the most accurate and there's always an out if, if somebody wants to go and contest. But, you know, um, it gives us the ability, Meredith, the ability to just go and pull up when someone says, I want to build a house or I want to build a deck or I want to fill in this part of my property. You just pull up the wetland map and go through and confirm that there's no, there are no wetlands there. So yeah, you've got the right to fill that area or you've got the right to build that in that place.
Always with the caveat of under our local regulations, don't forget to check with the state.
Yeah, don't forget to check with the state. Just because we give you permission, that doesn't exempt you from state rules.
Well, in, in that sense, it does make sense. It, in that way, it makes sense to align with the state when possible. And again, looking at this data, it does seem highly accurate just from a, a cursory look at it.
Yeah, but we will, when we, when we initially adopted, so in 2018, just so people have an understanding of the history. Yeah. 2018, there were no regulations for wetlands in Montpelier before 2018. There were no vernal pools. There were no steep slopes. There were no, so we added a lot of these environmental rules. And, and one of the things we said, because there were concerns from a lot of residents, was that, you know, we're only regulating, we only regulate what's on the map. And if there's going to be a change to that map, there'll be a public hearing to do it. And so we may hear from folks about, um, their concerns about having the map changed, but that's the process. So if the map adds more wetlands, that's, that's a public process and the city council can decide whether or not to accept those changes or not. So.
Jumping on that process a little bit, the, um, you said that the, the Conservation Commission, so are there developers that need to go in front of the Conservation Commission at times? Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
So if you happen to have, let's say. So if you happen to have, let's say, wetlands from this map on your property and want to develop on that property.
If you want to, if you want to impact, if you're going to develop.
Impact if.
If those, something.
Those polygons.
Yes. Although I don't know if the wetlands only, it's only riparian.
Okay.
If you wanted to have a waiver of the standard that first half. Of the water setback where you want it to be vegetated, if you want a waiver. Um, that isn't one of the exceptions I can allow, but it's a full waiver of converting some of that space to impervious surface. Or otherwise just tearing up the, that natural vegetation.
Yeah.
Then the Conservation Commission needs to have. A way in, they need to go before the Conservation Commission and the Conservation Commission acts as an advisory committee to the Development Review Board. The wetlands is not Conservation Commission.
With the subdivision?
So, so wetlands to get a waiver for actual development on the wetlands. You don't have to go to the Conservation Commission. If you're having a subdivision that involves. A riparian, a, a water setback. A wetland, a vernal pool, or one of those protected natural resource areas, a subdivision with any of those things has to get. Recommendations from the Conservation Commission that are then included in the packet before it goes, before, before it goes to the Development Review Board. For final review. And so that means that right now, that's why the minor subdivision, so a subdivision that I can apply. Can't involve any of those. Those all have to go to the DRB. But those are the two clear places where the Conservation Commission gets pulled in. Um, their input for the standard development within the wetland or the, um, vernal pool areas, I think.
It does not.
It, it doesn't necessarily go to them. If they find out about it, they can come and, and, you know, give testimony to the DRB, but. It's not required that it go to them, I don't think. I think we took that out.
I don't think, I don't see any requirement in there.
No.
In this section.
Uh, and we don't have, which is one thing to note for, for you and me, Mike, is the wetland vernal pools one. Um, we didn't do a, like a waiver thing in there because I think it's almost like the whole provision is a waiver. If it goes to the DRB in, in one sense.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't, it's not as built out as much as the other ones were. And we'll take a look at it and see if it needs to have those other ones. Like, like we had said. Purpose, applicability, the hearing requirements, development standards, and usually you have non-conformities and waivers. But for some reason this one doesn't. We'll have to just review it and see if there's a reason logically why, I can't remember. But we tried to be consistent about these. So just, just so you know, the next chunk of ones that we look at are, are more the DPW and the technical and the engineering ones. So steep slopes might sound environmental, but actually that's one that it goes to the engineering department because they're. Your engineered foundations and stuff, we send those to them to review. Um, erosion control, stormwater management, uh, vehicle access and, and parking requirements. And so we're getting much more into your, your. Engineering pieces. And the last one is signs, which doesn't have to do with DPW, but is. Kind of in that. That last group, all the signs could almost be a special use if we wanted to at some point, but they're in, they're in general standards. So that's what we'll review next time. We're kind of the more DPW nuts and bolts standards.
Anything else? No more questions? No? I'm looking for one last motion. Anybody?
Look, you getting everybody out.
I told you, I'm, I'm, I strive for efficiency.
I just got to say there are no term limits in this office, so you can, you can stick around for a long time.
I, it was funny when I went to the, um, when I went to city council. To renew my term, I sat down, they said, is anybody here from the, the commission? I said, yeah, I am. And I sat down, I said, hi, I'm Eric Kasekia. I've been on the commission for seven years. And like. Everybody just stopped and just looked at me like wide eyed. And I said, and you want to do it again?
Are you okay?
Yeah, that's, that was basically. The, the mayor said, congratulations or condolences once. Felt good. I motioned to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. For adjourn, thank you.